It is absolutely wonderful to see so many of you out this evening. The last time we were here, I had more employees here than I had parents. I am elated to see all of the parents out here today. But you know, I guess I knew that. Because these are ninth and 10th graders, right? You still holding on to our babies, right? I say to you, continue to hold on to them. Even through high school. Hold on to your scholars. So if you're ninth graders, let me see your hand. Ninth graders. Come on, all the way up, all the way up.
All the way up, all the way up.
Alright, 10th graders. One 10th grader, two. Alright, alright. Before we get started, let me say... I believe I have a few of individuals in the house that I would like to recognize. Our board member. And I see Mr. Rodney Alexander here, for sure. Please, give him a round of applause. I don't see anyone else but in their absence, our illustrative board president, Ms. Ardell Patterson. Our vice president, Mr. Samuel Valtarett.
Secretary.
I'm sorry, our secretary. Vice president, Ms. Teresa Kelly. We have also Mr. Ned Wagner. And we have Ms. Amanda Grant. And Ms. Claudia Medina. Please give them a round of applause. We only have two hours this evening. So, we're going to spend the first hour listening at our plans for the ensuing academic year. Now after each presenter, you will have the opportunity to ask your questions at that time. But if you really have detailed questions, we're going to ask that you wait for the next session, which will follow this first hour. Whereby you will disperse into the cafeteria. If your child is going to East. If your child is going to West, you will go to the third floor in the library. And if your child will be here at PMSA, you will remain in this area, okay? So, we're going to move expeditiously so we can capture your questions this evening. We'll get started with our deputy superintendent of schools, Dr. Sharon Williams. But just before we do that, I really would like to recognize the hard work that we, or that my employees have done in this district over the last few months. So colleagues, will you please stand and be recognized at this time? These individuals have really worked hard for our scholars. And we just want to thank them. So Dr. Williams, please come over.
Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, Ms. Argado is here to interpret for us tonight. And she would like to introduce the superintendent.
Buenas tardes, de parte del superintendente Sir Henderson. Bienvenidos, padres, familias y quienes estén presentes a nuestra junta municipal para los de noveno y décimo grado. Hoy hablaremos de lo que nos gustaría implementar este año escolar 2023 para nuestros alumnos. Una vez más, les damos una carulosa muy bienvenida a Proviso Township High School, Distrito 209. Por favor, si tiene alguna pregunta, guárde la para el final, levante su mano y con gusto se la contestaremos. Ahora escucharemos de la mano derecha del superintendente, la doctora Sharon Williams, su atención, por favor.
Alright, so good evening again. Tonight, we're going to spend a little bit of time going over our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Buenas tardes, una vez más. Hoy vamos a pasar algún tiempo hablando acerca de los derechos y responsabilidades de los estudiantes.
So very soon, you'll see this handbook posted on our website. We'll also make sure that it's emailed to you very soon. We're in the process of getting it translated. In the meantime, this evening, we're going to go over four big areas of our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And you'll hear more in detail when you go into your school groups in just a little bit.
Pronto verán este manual situado en nuestro sitio web donde usted lo podrá repasar en su casa si gusta. Y ahora vamos a hablar acerca de algunas de las responsabilidades de los estudiantes que tendremos para este año.
So the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is a framework that we're going to use together as a school community to define our academic standards and positive student behavior. It also is going to explain in detail the responsibilities and rights of all members of the school community. And will create a structure for us to forge relationships, that student to student, student to teacher, teacher to leader, and all the way around.
En este manual, lo que vamos a ver es una proporción, un marco para las normas académicas y el comportamiento positivo de los estudiantes. También se explican las expectativas, los derechos y las responsabilidades de todos los miembros de la comunidad escolar. También se creará una estructura en la que los estudiantes, los padres y los profesores horjarán asociaciones y relaciones educativas fundamentales para el éxito de los estudiantes.
So although we're going to focus more on behavioral expectations this evening, our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook has at least a full 30 pages of our academic rights and responsibilities of students. So when that handbook is published, I hope that you'll spend some time with your scholar reviewing the academic expectations that we have for your children.
Este manual es de 30 páginas o más y nuestros nuestros deseos son que cuando usted tenga este manual a su disposición, que tenga tiempo para repasarlo con su estudiante como familia y que ustedes juntos puedan aprender sobre ello.
So this town hall this evening is just one way we're going to continue to communicate with all of our stakeholders to ensure that we have clear expectations for everyone in our school community, that we're always communicating with you to make sure that you understand what's expected of your scholar day to day at school. And then also to hold all members of our school community responsible and accountable for making sure that our students are successful.
Deseamos con esta junta que las expectativas para este año escolar estén claras, que nuestra comunicación sea concisa con todos los directores que hoy van a estar presentando y también con los padres. Y también que todos seamos responsables en este año escolar con nuestros hijos.
Alright, so the major part of our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is our student code of conduct. And this really outlines our expectations for safe and orderly schools. Having students be safe and teachers and leaders and staff members be safe at schools are number one priority.
Primeramente, hablaremos del código de conducta de los alumnos. Cuáles son nuestras expectativas como líderes, maestros y padres de una escuela segura y ordenada. Y hablaremos de qué deseamos hacer para implementar esto.
So, as I've mentioned before, each part of our school community has a role to play regarding our behavioral and disciplinary expectations for school. So our scholars will have an opportunity multiple times within the next couple of weeks to listen to and be heard around their rights and responsibilities for a safe and orderly community. Families, we need your help. And we're soliciting your help this evening and throughout the school year to make sure that our students are on track. Our teachers are going to model the behavior that they'd like to see in their classrooms and also reinforce our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And finally, our leaders are the captains of the ship. And they are going to help guide all of the school community toward a safe and orderly school environment and high academic standards for all of our students.
Hablaremos acerca de las expectativas y comportamiento y disciplina entre todos. Primeramente, de los alumnos. Ellos van a mostrar comportamientos positivos y ellos alientan a sus compañeros a hacer lo mismo. Las familias apoyan el comportamiento de los alumnos reforzando el manual de derechos y responsabilidades de los estudiantes. Y los profesores nos ayudan reforzando las prácticas de comportamiento positivo y emplean las enseñanzas empáticas. También los líderes nos ayudan estableciendo expectativas y objetivos elevados, controlan y informan los datos con frecuencia y establecen y apoyan los procedimientos internos.
So what you'll notice in this edition of the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook are disciplinary response levels. This is new to our handbook this year. And we want to explain just a little bit about those discipline response levels this evening.
Algo que es nuevo en nuestro manual son los niveles de respuesta disciplinaria. Cómo es que tomamos acción cuando hay una ofensa en vuelta. Y vamos a hablar acerca de algunos de estos niveles.
So, our primary goal is to make sure that our students are in class every single day and that they have an opportunity to learn in a safe and orderly environment. And with that, administrators will typically use the lowest level of response to address any inappropriate behavior. Our goal is to first teach and reteach positive behavior in schools.
Los administradores generalmente usarán el nivel menos severo como respuesta para abordar el comportamiento inapropiado. Lo que deseamos es que el estudiante aprenda de lo que haya hecho antes de tomar un nivel de respuesta o disciplina.
It's ultimately the principals and the other school administrators' responsibility to ensure that our schools are safe. So serious behaviors and those behaviors that are deemed harmful to that environment may be addressed at the highest level.
Los comportamientos graves que se consideren perjudiciales para el entorno seguro y ordenado de la escuela podrán acordarse a nivel más alto de consecuencia.
And finally, all of our scholars are individuals and they will be treated as such. So each disciplinary consequence will be addressed on a case-by-case basis.
Todos los alumnos son diferentes así que cada caso es diferente. Y dependiendo de la ofensa que se cometió, las consecuencias disciplinarias se evaluarán caso por caso.
This is a screenshot from the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And what's illustrated here is that we want to be very clear about the disciplinary response levels for each violation or incident that may happen in school. So on the left side of the chart, you'll see the violation or the incident that may occur. In the middle, you'll see brief description of that incident. And over to the right, you'll see the response level that should be considered when that behavioral incident happens in school.
Aquí lo que vemos son los niveles de disciplina que tomamos cuando se comete una ofensa. Al principio podemos ver cuál es la ofensa que se cometió. En el medio hay una breve descripción de la ofensa cometida y qué es lo que sucedería, el implicado. Y finalmente, al final vemos cuál es el nivel de respuesta que damos por dicha ofensa.
So very briefly, the disciplinary response levels range from level one to five. One being the lowest response that school administrators will consider. And the aim of levels one and two is to teach and/or reteach and correct inappropriate behavior.
Las metas de disciplina de nivel uno y dos es siempre enseñar y corregir conductas inapropiadas. Estas respuestas abordan las implicaciones potenciales de daños futuros mientras se mantiene el estudiante en la escuela.
Beginning at level four through five, these offenses or incidents at school that, with a student's continuing presence in school, could pose a threat to the school's safety. That includes the safety of students, staff, teachers, or leaders. That may be addressed through a short-term suspension at a level three and a longer-term suspension at levels four and five.
El tercer nivel de respuesta viene siendo la presencia continua de un estudiante en la escuela que podría representar una amenaza para la seguridad escolar o una interrupción del entorno de aprendizaje. Y estas normalmente consisten en una suspensión de cuarto paso de la escuela de uno a tres días.
Our ultimate goal is to keep students in class every day. However, we know that there are times where student's behavior violates the rights of others or could pose a danger. In those cases, the levels four and five response levels are reserved for those cases. And that may include longer-term suspensions. And at a level five, consideration for placement in an alternative learning program, which will be outside of the school.
Nuestro nivel es siempre mantener los estudiantes en clase, pero por cierta razón, éstas se... Éstas se... El... Perturba demasiado el entorno educativo. Estas respuestas se van a enfocar en la seguridad de la comunidad escolar y terminar con conductas autoagresivas, autodestructivas y graves. Normalmente terminar con una suspensión a más largo plazo de más de cuatro días. Y si el comportamiento de un estudiante interrumpe demasiado el entorno educativo, entonces normalmente este estudiante será removido de la escuela y puesto en un programa de oportunidad de aprendizaje alternativo.
So for example, in our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, we are trying to do a very good job of defining what the incidents may be and give examples of those. So for example, in fighting, there could be a discipline response level from one to five just depending on the severity of the incident and also the investigation that occurs after the fight. So on the left, you'll see the description, definition of the incident. And then on the right, you'll see some examples of what we mean by fighting when we say fighting.
Estos son algunos de los niveles de respuesta disciplina, el uno al cinco. Por ejemplo, podemos ver cómo es que tratamos con lo que tiene que ver con peleas. A la izquierda podemos ver una descripción de lo que es que sucede. Y al lado derecho podemos ver cómo es que actuamos o qué es lo que sucede cuando es que sucede alguna de estas, por ejemplo, peleas. Tiene que ver con esos detalles, si fuera empujar intencionalmente una pelea con rasguños. Esos detalles definen qué tan... Qué tanto fue la ofensa y ahí es donde tomamos en cuenta el nivel de disciplina del uno al cinco.
So now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Bessie Carvalas, the executive director of Student Services, to talk to you about why scholar attendance is so important and how this will be addressed this year in our schools.
Ahora vamos a escuchar a la doctora Carvelas, la directora ejecutiva de la equidad de los estudiantes. Y vamos a hablar acerca de la asistencia de los alumnos y cómo esto contribuye al éxito escolar.
Muchas gracias. Okay, thank you, Dr. Williams.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming. As Dr. Henderson said, it's wonderful to see such a full house this evening.
I don't know if that's going to work, Dr. Williams.
Oh, really?
God bless you.
You know, I'm so excited, right? That's why I'm going to put... Okay. So I'm going to start with this slide. This is a very, very important slide. And we are talking about state law. And also, it is the policy of our Board of Education. Whenever... Whoever has custody or control of any child between ages of six and seventeen years of age shall assure that the child attends school in the district in which he or she resides during the entire time school is in session, unless the child has already graduated from high school. That is the state law and that is also in the Board of Education policy. Very, very important and that's what attendance is about.
Los procedimientos de asistencia del Distrito 209 que tenga la custodia o el control de cualquier niño de entre seis y 17 años de edad deberá asegurarse de que el niño asista a la escuela en el distrito en el que reside durante todo el tiempo en que la escuela esté en sesión, a menos que el niño ya se haya graduado de la escuela secundaria, es por orden de la ley.
When students don't come to school, it creates a domino effect. Slowly, it affects them. This is what happens to them. They begin to feel out of place. They fall behind. They miss important opportunities. They begin not to get along with others. They don't see a bright academic future. They develop low grades, low test scores. They are less likely to be on track to graduate. Each week of absence in the ninth grade lowers their likelihood of graduating by 25%. And their personality begins to change at home.
La falta de asistencia repercute negativamente en los alumnos. Y esto es como. Se sienten fuera del hogar, se quedan atrás, pierden oportunidades importantes, no se llevan bien con los demás, no ven un futuro académico brillante, tienen bajas calificaciones, bajos resultados en los exámenes, tienen menos probabilidades de graduarse. Cada semana de ausencia en el noveno grado disminuye su probabilidad de graduarse en un 25%. Y por adición de la doctora también cambia su personalidad.
So parents, it's really important to understand that improving scholar attendance is a collective responsibility. It does not fall on the burden of the school, the district, and the school leaders. That is a responsibility, that is a collective responsibility. It falls on our shoulders together. It is a team effort, it is a partnership. For our students to have good attendance, we have to do it together collectively. If you notice these circles, they're intertwined. Because we are intertwined. Our scholars, our families, our teachers, our school leaders. We have to work together collectively to assure that our scholars are going to have strong attendance. We cannot do it alone. You cannot do it alone, and we understand that. But we can do it together.
Mejorar la asistencia de los alumnos es una responsabilidad colectiva, tanto del estudiante, las familias, los maestros, los líderes escolares. La responsabilidad no solamente cae sobre la escuela que se asegure que sus hijos estén en clase. Es un esfuerzo colectivo y juntos podemos lograr que los estudiantes estén en clase todos los días.
So we have set up expectations, and these expectations are for all of us. For our students, we want our scholars to come to school on time. Be present every day in every single class. Families, you need to support the scholars to come to school in a timely fashion. Please report their attendance. When they are not coming to school, you need to call. Let us know that they're not in school. They need to communicate this to the school. The teachers, the instructional staff, they have certain expectations. They have to report their attendance in a timely fashion because they have to keep accurate records. Why do they have to keep accurate records? Because they have to have internal accounts that the school leader has to report. Who are they going to report the internal accounts to? To the state. Because we are accountable to the state. That creates a domino effect. We have expectations for the leaders to report and monitor their data frequently because those internal procedures have to go to the state of Illinois. So it all creates a pattern that starts with the families. So please, when a student is absent, we need to make sure that we know. It makes a big difference between being excused, being unexcused, being truant. But if we work together and we follow the procedures, we can avoid all that.
Las expectativas de la asistencia son que todos los alumnos lleguen a tiempo y estén presentes todos los días en todas las clases. Las familias nos pueden apoyar con la asistencia y la puntualidad de los alumnos informando las ausencias a tiempo y comunicándose con la escuela. Si sus hijos van a faltar a clase, por favor de llamar y dejarnos saber. Es muy importante para nuestros datos. Y los profesores y el personal docente, ellos establecen grandes expectativas en cuanto a asistencia y puntualidad de los alumnos. Y ellos también nos garantizan el mantenimiento de registros precisos comunicándose con los alumnos y sus familias. Finalmente, los líderes ellos establecen expectativas y objetivos elevados, controlan e informan los datos con frecuencia y establecen y apoyan los procedimientos internos.
So this year, we are really, really excited because every year, we only have PMSA that had an A- Period Day. But now, Proviso East and Proviso West has an A- Period Day. So all three schools are on the same schedule. School begins at... School begins at seven fifty-five a.m. and ends at three fifteen. So, we want every single student to be in class sitting in their seat at seven fifty-five. Now, on Mondays, Mondays are late start days. So, that means that first-period class on Mondays, eight forty. Teachers have professional development in the morning and that's why it starts at eight forty on Mondays. So, if there's a holiday on Monday, the first day of the week is going to be on Tuesday. So, that's going to be the first day of the week and professional development will begin on Tuesday for them. So, eight forty will be on that late day, okay?
Algo nuevo que tenemos este año es que nuestras tres escuelas, Proviso East, West, y PMSA, van a tener una jornada escolar de ocho periodos. Antes no eran ocho periodos. Este año las tres escuelas tendrán ocho periodos. La escuela comienza a las siete cincuenta y cinco de la mañana, se espera que los estudiantes estén dentro de su clase a las siete cincuenta y cinco y termina a las tres quince p.m. Los alumnos esperamos que lleguen a tiempo a cada clase todos los días, menos los lunes. Los lunes hay, se empieza tarde a las ocho y cuarenta de la mañana porque los maestros se reúnen. Así que solo los lunes se empieza tarde a las ocho y cuarenta de la mañana.
Okay, so here we have consequences for chronic absenteeism. According to Illinois law, Illinois law defines chronic absentee as a student who misses ten percent of a school day within an academic year with or without a valid excuse. Ladies and gentlemen, that's eighteen days out of a hundred and eighty days. That is not a lot of days, eighteen days in a whole school year. So, yes, it says consequences, but don't look at it as a consequences. Look at it as if we put in interventions because that's what we're doing. We are working with you. We are working with you so that we have interventions in place so that you do not have issues later on in the year. So, what have we decided to do? We've decided to put you on a program, which means three days absent, we are going to have you parent and teacher conference. Let's find out. Why were you not in school for those three days? Let's see what's going on. Let's give you the supports that you need and let's help you. Five days. Now, we're going to bump it up to the principal, the grade-level principal, excuse me. So, we're going to sit down with the grade-level principal. We're going to find out, well, let's see what other intervention we're going to put in place. Maybe it's some other supports that we can give you. The next step, if it continues, certified letter. When you hit the principal's office, we got a problem here. That's ten days. Because right after the ten days, then you're going to get another certified letter and it said, "An adjudication hearing will be scheduled." An adjudication hearing means that you're going to go in front of a judge and you're going to be at a court. And you're going to be telling the judge why you missed twenty school days of school. And then you're going to have to explain to the judge. And that's not going to be nice. And not only that, it's actually a class C misdemeanor. You might have to pay a fine, you might have to go to jail for thirty days and we're trying to avoid that. That's why I'm calling it intervention because we want to avoid all that, we want to work with you and we want to be a support for you and your family because we want everybody in school and we want to work with you.
En el estado de Illinois, la ley define que hay ciento ochenta días en el día escolar. Si su hijo pierde dieciocho de estos días, se considera un estudiante que falta crónicamente. Si su estudiante falta tres días, se va a hacer una reunión con los padres para ver qué está sucediendo con su estudiante. Si su estudiante falta cinco días o más consecutivos, se va a programar una reunión entre los padres y el director de ese grado para ver qué está sucediendo con su hijo. Si usted, si su hijo falta crónicamente diez días, ahora se programará una reunión entre padres y directores de la escuela con una carta certificada enviada antes de la reunión en el cual se hablara acerca de qué podemos hacer con su estudiante. Veinte días o más te faltas crónicamente, ahora se programará una audiencia de resolución con una carta certificada enviada antes de la audiencia y veinte días o más, ahora es orden de la ley y ya la escuela no tiene más dicho en esto.
We are a team, a partnership. We work together.
Somos un equipo, trabajamos juntos.
Thank you, Dr. Carvelas. So, now we're going to talk about electronic devices. So, that includes cell phones and other electronic devices that students may have at school. And we'll talk about the responsible use of cell phones and how those, our Board of Education has defined in their policy, the acceptable use of cell phones in schools. So, as I mentioned, our Board of Education has a policy that governs the use of cell phones and other electronic devices in our schools. As you can see, a discipline response level of a one or a two could be handed out if a student is misusing their electronic devices in school. So, on the left, I'm going to define some of the ways students can use their cell phones during lunch. Your principal in our breakout session in the second hour will further define that and what that looks like at their individual schools. So, one, students can use phones during lunch. Phones can be used for educational purposes under the guidance of their teacher. Of course, we'll allow students to use phones in emergency situations and they may also possess cell phones as long as they are powered off and out of sight during the regular school day.
Ahora vamos a hablar acerca de los dispositivos electrónicos y celulares y cuándo es apropiado que los estudiantes lo utilicen. Si los pueden traer a clase, lo único que pedimos es que ellos utilicen su teléfono durante el almuerzo. Que utilicen los teléfonos con fines educativos bajo la dirección de su profesor. Si es para hacer alguna tarea o para mandar algún correo electrónico que tiene que ver con un proyecto que están haciendo, eso es apropiado. También pueden utilizar su teléfono en situaciones de emergencia, eso se entiende. También pueden poseer celulares siempre y cuando estén apagados y fuera de la vista escolar durante el día y no estén interrumpiendo la clase.
So, some of the ways we define that students cannot use their cell phones primarily have to deal with disruption in classrooms or using cell phones to violate the rights of others. For instance, taking photos in locker rooms, bathrooms, or other sensitive areas where students should not be photographed or videoed. To be academically dishonest, in other words, using your cellphone to gain an advantage and not be honest in your academics. And then finally, to create, send, share, view, receive, or possess indecent visual depictions. And that includes fights. We want to make sure that we're honoring and keeping our schools safe by not sharing those kind of pictures or visual depictions on our cell phones.
Ahora hablaremos de cuándo no es apropiado de que su estudiante tenga su celular y es para usar su celular o su dispositivo electrónico para violar los derechos de los demás y esto incluye fotografías en los vestidores o en los baños. Usar su celular para hacer trampa tampoco es apropiado. O crear, enviar, compartir, ver, recibir o poseer representaciones visuales indecentes. Esto incluye para mandar o ver peleas que suceden en la escuela. Para estas ocasiones, el teléfono no es apropiado y esto normalmente se considera una ofensa uno y dos y se puede tomar alguna disciplina si es que nos enteramos de que su hijo está usando su dispositivo electrónico para algunas de estas cosas.
So, our ultimate goal is to keep our students safe in school, also to ensure that there are limited distractions during the day. We all know as adults that cell phones can be very distracting and the principal really has the right, ultimately according to our Board of Education, to ban cell phones if the use of cell phones is disrupting the school environment.
Nuestra meta y prioridad es que su hijo esté seguro y que los demás estudiantes en la escuela estén seguros. Si es que por alguna razón el teléfono de alguien está siendo usado para cosas inapropiadas, el director tiene el derecho de quitarle el celular a su hijo y de restárselo a usted como padre en otra ocasión.
So, finally, again, we need your assistance, students, families, teachers, and leaders to make sure that our school environment is one that is free from distractions so that students can learn in a way that helps them graduate. And cell phones can be a distraction. We know that it's important and everybody has one now. So, we need to make sure that we're being responsible with those in school so that we can maintain the right to possess one at school.
Deseamos que todos trabajemos juntos, tanto los estudiantes, familiares, los profesores y los líderes, para mantener una escuela segura donde los celulares y los dispositivos electrónicos no estén causando distracciones y lo que deseamos es mantener una escuela libre de distracciones para que los estudiantes puedan aprender lo más posible.
So, now we're going to talk a little bit about scholar appearance. We want our scholars to dress for success and Dr. Carvelas is going to talk to us a little bit about the student dress code.
Ahora vamos a escucharle la doctora Carvelas una vez más y nos va a hablar acerca de la apariencia de los alumnos y por qué esto contribuye a que ellos se vistan para el éxito.
We want our students to dress for success and when they come to school, they have to look at school as a business because school is the place to learn and it's a business for learning. And we have to look at that as someplace to come properly dressed, with proper attire. And when we come to school, we want our students to feel comfortable. We want them to dress for comfort, but you also have to be dressed appropriately.
Deseamos que nuestros estudiantes vean la escuela como su oficio y que vengan vestidos como que lo ven como tal y deseamos que nuestros estudiantes vengan vestidos cómodos y que se sientan bien pero que vengan vestidos de manera modesta.
Now, in the School of Quota Conta, there are the details of what you should wear and what you should not wear. I'm not going to go through the whole thing tonight. I'm only going to go through a few captions of it and just talk very little about it, the most important part because we can't be here all night. So, we're just going to touch the surface with it. But, oh, can we go ahead? Families, support the dress code, communicate it with your students. The teachers will talk about it with your students. They will come home and I'm sure they're going to talk to you about it and the leaders will talk about it. This whole slide, again, is a collective responsibility. That's why you see all components. You see the students, the teachers, the leaders, the families because it's a collective responsibility again. It falls on the shoulders of all of us. We all have to be responsible for what our students are wearing. Parents, teachers, leaders, and students. We all have to work collectively together to make sure that they are appropriately dressed. So, when the teacher says, "Your son or daughter has not come to school properly dressed," please adhere to what the teacher is saying because we don't want them to be inappropriately dressed. It makes the teacher feel uncomfortable when she has to say, "This is not nice. Do not wear it." Okay, and then the teacher will model for them. The leaders will set high expectations and they will let you know.
Hay muchos puntos en el manual sobre la vestimenta. Hoy solamente vamos a repasar algunos ya que no tenemos mucho tiempo pero primeramente las familias nos pueden ayudar viendo cómo es que sus hijos se visten en la mañana y cómo sale para la escuela. Los profesores nos van a ayudar siendo el ejemplo de lo que es una vestimenta modesta y ejemplificada y los líderes nos van a ayudar siendo buenos maestros también en esto y dejándoles a veces a los estudiantes de buena forma acerca de su vestimenta. Una vez más, es un equipo colectivo en el que podemos ayudar todos en la vestimenta de los estudiantes. Nuestro deseo no es tener que decirle a los estudiantes acerca de su vestimenta ni tratar de corregirlos. Simplemente deseamos que vengan bien vestidos y que ustedes como padres nos ayuden en esto.
So, here, students, they can dress comfortably for school without fear of unnecessary discipline or body shaming. Teachers can focus on teaching without additional or often uncomfortable burden of dress code enforcement. These are the do-nots. Wear head coverings of any kind and of course, we're excluding head coverings worn for religious or medical reasons. We're not talking about that. Wear shirts or trousers that expose the midsection. That is not allowed. And anything that looks like lingerie is not allowed. Wear anything clothing that exposes underclothing or buttocks. And slippers or sleepwear is not allowed.
Los estudiantes pueden vestirse cómodamente para irles a la escuela sin temor a la disciplina innecesaria o la vergüenza corporal y los profesores pueden centrarse en la enseñanza sin la carga adicional y a menudo incómoda de hacer cumplir el código de vestimenta a algún estudiante. El estudiante no puede llevar la cabeza cubierta de cualquier manera pero sí se excluyen las cubiertas de cabeza usadas por razones religiosas o médicas. Tampoco se permite usar camisas o blusas que expongan la sección media o el estómago. Tampoco puede llevar ropa que deja descubierto la ropa interior o los grueltos y tampoco puede llevar zapatillas u otra ropa de dormir.
This can be a Level One or Two discipline, but we don't want him to do that. We just want you to come to school appropriately.
Podemos dar un nivel de respuesta disciplinaria del uno o dos pero no deseamos hacer esto. Simplemente deseamos que nuestros estudiantes vengan vestidos correctamente.
All right, so this evening we just want to wrap up by saying that our goal for tonight is to communicate with you and we want to continue this communication with you throughout the year. So, it's very important for us to have your correct phone number, your correct email address. We would also like for you to connect with us on social media. I'm sure many of you may have seen it on Facebook or on Twitter or send directly to your emails. It's very important for us, for you, to be able to communicate with us and us with you.
Nuestra meta este año escolar es tener una excelente comunicación con ustedes como padres. Si, por favor, puede actualizar con nosotros su número de teléfono, su correo electrónico. Síganos en las redes sociales para que así podamos tener una buena comunicación de lo que está sucediendo en la escuela y también con su hijo.
Finally, we're going to pass it over to our operations colleagues. After, oh, questions, sorry, Dr. Henderson. So, now we're going to take questions. So, feel free to ask any questions about anything that was presented tonight or other areas that we can address with you.
Ahora vamos a tomar preguntas. Si usted tiene alguna pregunta, algo que gustaría decir antes que empecemos, el doctor Henderson va a tomar preguntas.
So, question in the back, if you'll stand up and speak very clearly and loudly.
Are we allowed to wear backpacks like in the class period?
Can you wear your backpacks between class periods? So, that is a very school-specific question. I believe that you, of course, can possess your backpack. So, when you go to your breakout session with your principal, just be sure that you ask that question there.
Alguien preguntó si puede usar su mochila entre periodos. Este dijo la doctora que esto es una pregunta muy específica que ya le pueden preguntar a la escuela que ya presentan.
Here and then here. Yes, sir?
Regarding being here at seven fifty-five, what time will the security doors open for the school if we have to be in class by seven fifty-five? I just wanted...
That is another very school-specific question that we want to make sure we get answered specifically. So, when you're in your session with Mr. No, make sure you ask him that question. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yes, wait.
What's going on with the schedules?
One moment, let me let her translate.
Oh, sorry.
Alguien preguntó que si vamos a estar en clase a las siete cincuenta y cinco, a qué hora van a mi escuela. La doctora Williams dijo que, por favor, le pregunte a su escuela individual al final de esto, ¿cuál escuela se va a repartir en diferentes cuartos? Y es cuando usted puede preguntarle a qué horas la seguridad abre las puertas de su escuela.
Yes, ma'am.
What's going on with the schedules? Why do we not have schedules yet? I mean, we went to pick up books. You know, I don't know if all the parents here are freshman parents, but I was expecting that the schedules were already done. I was expecting to pick up books that were related to their classes and I was expecting them to go ahead and go through the process. And then I didn't understand why we have the town meeting and then, this is like my fourth meeting. I mean, we did registration, I did in-person registration. I've been to all of them and I feel like communication is partly missing somewhere.
Lacky.
You can't make a phone call, I mean, to talk to somebody. I mean, this is the first time I'm able to talk to anybody. I called the district because I was very frustrated as a freshman parent that I'm struggling as a freshman parent going, "Why can't I talk to anybody? What's going on? Why are we picking up books today if they don't have schedules? If we have a freshman orientation, why am I coming to this, 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 this when all the freshmen should be together? All the freshman parents should be together and we should all get everything done together instead of going to like five, six meetings." So, I'm sorry, I had lots of questions because it's like, I feel like I don't have any answers and I'm very, very... I feel like I don't have any answers and I'm very, very disappointed as a first-year parent.
I'm very sorry to hear that. I would like for Ms. Salgado, I would like Ms. Salgado to interpret the concern.
Eso es mucho, pero voy a tratar de resumir lo que esta mamá está diciendo. Ella siente que hay muy poca comunicación en la escuela, que la comunicación no es buena. Ella siente que vino para el agendado de su hijo y no se lo dieron. Que vino para recoger identificación y no estuvo presente. Que ella ha tratado de llamar y que no tienen buen número de comunicación para llegar aquí a la escuela. Que no está contenta o no está satisfecha con la comunicación de la escuela. Y ahorita le va a contestar su pregunta.
So the schedules are being worked on diligently right now to make sure that each student has a full schedule, a correct schedule, with a highly qualified teacher on the first day of school and every day of school this year.
Estamos dando los agendados durante esta semana. No sé por qué esta mamá en particular no recibió el de ella. Tenemos a maestras certificadas que están tratando de hacer lo mejor que pueden para traer a los estudiantes lo que necesitan para el año escolar.
All students will have accessibility and families. Two students' schedules on the evening of August 31st, beginning at 5:00 p.m.
Agosto 31 a las 5:00 p.m., todos los estudiantes van a tener disponibilidad de ver sus agendados.
Our sincere goal is to make sure that all students are in class on time every day, especially the first day of school, and that they have a full schedule beginning day one.
Nuestra meta sincera es que todos los estudiantes estén en clase al tiempo, especialmente el primer día.
To the question regarding books and materials, we are certainly apologize that you had that experience at your school. I think Dr. Carvalas has taken your name and information. We want to connect with you personally regarding that. And you also have access, direct access, to your principal. So I would suggest certainly reaching out to your principal this evening around those concerns.
Don't worry, I will.
En cuanto a los libros y los artículos que necesita para la escuela, la doctora puede enfrentar una sincera disculpa. No sabe por qué, es que no le ha recibido sus artículos. Pero la está animando a hablar con el principal de su escuela para que el principal directamente la pueda ayudar. Ahorita la doctora Carvalas está tomándose información y le va a poder ayudar en otro momento.
All right. I do see a gentleman with his hand raised here and then here, so don't let me forget.
Question regarding transportation.
Yes.
Will you provide transportation? Since we live on the well, very western end of the district, how we get here if the car is broken or we cannot come there? Will you provide a bus or...
Which school is your child a parent? Can you interpret that?
Alguien está preguntando sobre transportación, si es que tenemos transportación para PMSA y que si es que si se le rompe el carro o alguna situación extrema que él puede hacer.
We do offer transportation for our students in our two-zone comprehensive high schools. We do not yet provide transportation for our students here at our selective enrollment school, PMSA.
Sí ofrecemos autobuses y transportación para los estudiantes de East West. En este momento no ofrecemos autobuses para PMSA porque es legislación selectiva.
There may be opportunities for you to seek assistance from your principal and from social workers regarding special circumstances with transportation. So please make sure that you direct that question to Mr. No directly if there are issues with transportation.
Si hay algún caso especial y absolutamente necesita transportación, puede hablar con su trabajadora social de su escuela o con el principal y él puede ver si puede hacer algún ajuste para poder ayudarle.
All right. There was a young lady here first.
Thank you for the young lady. Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Felicia. So thank you so much for being here. This is not my first year here at provisor. So I would like to say thank you so much because it's the first meeting. We have translator. And I would like to speak Spanish for the people because the most, 50% of our community is Spanish people. Eh, no sé si me quieras traducir.
Claro que sí. She's saying that she's very happy that we have a Spanish translator here today and that she wants to talk in Spanish because the majority of the population here is Spanish-speaking and that she's very grateful that we're doing this.
Yes.
Okay, voy a preguntarte algunas preguntas.
Sí.
Y este año tienen todos los maestros de todas las áreas cubiertos. Porque el año pasado tuvieron varios salones que no tenían las clases y los maestros necesarios. Hubo alumnos que tuvieron más de tres semanas sin un maestro. Quiero saber si tienen un plan porque estamos a varios días de empezar y no quiero que vuelva a pasar eso, que no haya maestros en las aulas. Porque cómo podemos llegar a un éxito si no tenemos desde el principio del día o del principio de las clases, todas las clases cubiertas con los maestros necesarios.
So está diciendo que no habían maestros para cada clase?
Habían, habían. En los personal y experiencia, en mi estudiante pasó dos semanas sin maestro.
Okay.
Yo quiero estar segura que este año no vuelva a pasar lo mismo, ni con mi estudiante ni con demás estudiantes.
Que este año todas las clases tengan un maestro. Está bien.
So this mom is asking that, she's saying that last year she felt like her child did not have a teacher for every single class. And she's saying that at some point her child went two weeks or more without a teacher and that several of the child's friends did as well. She wants to know if this year we are fully staffed and we have the teachers available for every single course that there is.
Thank you for that question. So we are working very hard. Our director of human resources is here this evening. And he and his team are beating the bushes for highly qualified teachers. So what we want to make sure of is that we have a highly qualified teacher in each of our classrooms. We do still have vacancies, however. Our team is working diligently to make sure that each child has a highly qualified teacher in every one of their classrooms.
Dice la doctora que estamos tratando diligentemente de contratar maestros muy certificados para todos las vacaciones que hay. Tenemos a nuestro director de recursos humanos aquí. Él está trabajando diligentemente para contratar aún más maestros. Pensamos que tenemos suficiente maestros y equipo, pero que nunca nos cansamos de contratar aún mejores maestros y mejores capacitados.
Ah, una cosa más. Pero yo quiero saber si está completo. Yo sé que todos los días dicen ustedes trabajan mucho. Pero realmente empiezan las clases y no está el maestro.
She's saying that she understands that we're looking diligently for teachers. She just wants to make sure that the beginning of school year, we have, we are fully staffed with teachers.
I know you are working hard, but it's not just like you. You are prepared for that. Do you have the whole teacher complete for the whole class?
No.
That might be...
No.
I don't know.
No, the answer is no. The answer is no. There's no way.
Are we having a teachers, are we fully staffed with teachers so that the kids are not missing any classes or the classrooms are empty?
Let me say, we will, we're going to address human resources shortly. For the sake of time, I would like to focus on the questions from Dr. Williams and Dr. Carvalas. And we will answer your question in just a moment when the director personnel come forward, okay?
So I'm sorry, I have another question too.
Sure.
Déjenme decirle lo que era... Solo está diciendo que el director de recursos humanos va a hablar en este momento. Él le quiere dar una respuesta concisa, no quiere decirle que sí cuando no. Entonces que él va a hablar en un momento.
So if you have questions around the presentation from Dr. Williams or Dr. Carvalas, please ask at this time. Yes.
About the communication, she say like, we are together, we are one team. So how we can do that one? If you're the first thing, when I try to call to the provisor or anyone like PMSA, like it or what? And the system is working, it's not working. Nobody answers. If you use like a Spanish, for example, the option is, it's not working. This is the first thing, you know?
You're absolutely correct. And let me be...
It is one year. I tried to, for one year. It's always when I try to call somebody, they're machines, they're all...
Let me be very clear. We are having issues with our phone system. So we are working on that. And hopefully, we will have rectified that by October. We're putting a new system in place. So I feel your pain.
La pregunta ahora es que la mamá ha tratado de llamar a East West, PMSA, y dice que no le contestan sus llamadas. Que siempre va a este mensaje de voz. Y si vamos a trabajar para mejorar nuestro sistema. El doctor Henderson está diciendo que estamos tratando de conseguir un nuevo sistema de teléfono, que sí tiene razón. Estamos teniendo fallas con ello, pero que vamos a tratar este año de sacar un nuevo sistema de teléfono para mejorar la comunicación.
Okay, te las voy a dar.
La última dice.
La última, acerca de seguridad de los alumnos, de los estudiantes. So el año pasado hubo muchísimas peleas en la escuela. Esto es en general en el distrito. No quiero ser exactamente cada una, verdad? No quiero decir el nombre de cada una. Pero hubo muchas peleas. So no nos tenía, no nos llamaban a los padres. A mí nunca me llegó un mensaje cuando se...
Formaban peleas.
O sea, se estaban peleando o había, había un problema grande. No me llamaban. No me daba ni siquiera un correo electrónico, sino te enterabas exactamente por los muchachos. Porque, por qué razón? Porque ellos llegaban la información a sus celulares. So yo quiero saber si están preparados también con el personal de seguridad. Que el personal de seguridad esté preparado, si está protegido, porque a veces que los maestros han sido golpeados. Yo pienso que hasta ahora los maestros, si yo fuera ansiada de alguna de esas escuelas, les daría miedo intervenir en una pelea. Para no salir, pues añada, ¿no?
Sí, entiendo.
Quiero ver si ya están bien preparados para eso, porque no quiero que el estudiante vuelva a pasar este año lo mismo.
Claro, okay.
Mom is saying that last year there were so many fights in the schools.
What?
And she's saying that whenever there was a fight, that she would never get a phone call from her school saying, "There was a fight today in school", and she wants to make sure that we have the security personnel required so that she feels safe with her child at school. She's also saying that some of these fights, she would find out about them through her own child and not through the teachers or through somebody calling her to let her know. And that some of these fights look so violent that she said that if she worked here, she would be scared to intervene. So do we have trained staff to intervene when these fights happen?
Very good question. And you have some very unique concerns. I'm going to ask that you see me after this meeting, okay?
They're not unique. They're not unique. It's a district, why?
Yes, yes, sure. We have to go through a face for that. Have anything else?
Can you address the fights because it's a concern. It's a huge concern.
You're absolutely correct. And that's exactly what we're trying to do this evening. Is to let you know that we will have security in place to handle the fights. We will be training our personnel to ensure that they do what they need to do around the fights. Children are going to be children. We're going to do our very best to keep everyone safe.
Yeah, I got a pattern, right? And I would like to give you one answer, like, you are working in the... But if you do it for fight for that, because you are training. But in the moment, nobody is training for that. That's why I'm seeing the video, like, my daughter is showing. So I'm tired because I am here on a few, another work. And it's almost the same thing. I'm working hard. We are trying to be the best, nothing but the best. But I can see, like, we can do nothing but the best if we don't work together. And I show...
You're absolutely correct. We must work together. And that's what we are attempting to do.
El doctor Henderson dice que sí tenemos el personal requerido para combatir esto de las peleas. También pidió hablar con la mamá privadamente para ayudarle a contestar alguna de estas preguntas que ella tiene. Entonces, estamos trabajando en eso. La mamá dice que es lo único que ella sigue escuchando, que estamos trabajando, que estamos trabajando. Pero en realidad, si tenemos el personal requerido para ello, simplemente que las peleas suceden. Y parece que ahorita hay otra pregunta.
Okay. Thank you so much again for having us here and being willing to be in the hot seat. It takes a lot to do that. We appreciate it. I have a question on the slide because there's some, it's some miscommunication. Well, it's kind of, anyway. In regards to being absent, it says we all need to work together. We need to communicate with you guys. We need to let you know. And as long as we let you know, that's good. But then, right after that, it says, whether we tell you or not, it's going to count against our children. That I don't understand. Because if I come to you and I say, "Okay, this is something that happens every year and I expect my child to be out from this day to this day and work with her teachers, make sure that she has what she need academically so she doesn't fall behind", why does she still fall in the category of it's going to count against her if we tell you or not?
Este padre lo que está preguntando es que ella no entiende lo que tiene que ver con las ausencias. Que aunque su estudiante falte y ella llame y reporte que su estudiante falte, todavía es una falta que cuenta en contra del estudiante. Entonces ella está preguntando que por qué si ella llamó y reportó la falta, por qué está contando esta falta en contra de los estudiantes.
So if you call the attendance office and you tell us that you're going to be absent, your child's going to be absent this day, the bad day, we have to mark the attendance books that the child's going to be absent. It doesn't count against your child that the child's going to be absent. We have to mark the attendance books because that's legal document. That's not a problem. But if you're telling us that the teacher is not allowing your child to make up the work, that is a problem. I want you to call me and I will take care of that.
No, you misunderstood. No, what I'm saying is in the slide, it says whether the fifth, if they're gone for five days... Well, the first part of the first sentence says, with or with, if you let us know.
Okay, yes. Okay, so there's two absenteeism is excused or unexcused absenteeism. Right. So the state puts that together. Chronic absenteeism is excused or unexcused. That's the way the state defines chronic absenteeism. Now, there's also chronic truancy. Chronic truancy is different. That is when the state says, "Okay, you are truant", that's different. That is when you are intentionally keeping your child home. That's a different kind of absenteeism. If you're intentionally keeping your child home because your child is watching your little baby, that is a different story. Then that's a problem. So that's chronic truancy. But what the state does, they compile the truancy with the unexcused and the excused together. So what I did on the slide, I just put them together as a chronic absenteeism.
This is what I'm talking about specifically right behind me. It says five days, parent grade level principal conference, if my child is absent for five days.
Right. So if it's, this, I've compiled it together because we want to make sure that we have strong attendance. Simply because chronic absenteeism is defined as with or without a valid excuse. And because the state defines it with or without a valid excuse, I combined them together so that we could sit down and make sure that we have strong attendance so we don't let anybody fall through the cracks. That's why I did it.
My question is, if I come to you and I say, "This is what's going to happen", do we still fall under this category and need to sit down and have these conversations when I've already told you ahead of time?
No. That's, that's different.
Okay, that's my question.
That's different.
Okay.
Okay. But you see why I'm doing it, right?
No, yeah.
Okay. Because we have 2,000 kids and we do not want anybody to fall through the cracks.
I, I get it.
Okay, all right.
La...
We don't have parents like you all the time. Okay?
All right, I understand.
Entonces, explicando las cuantas, si es que uno falta consecutivamente, pero uno lo reporta a la escuela y dice, va a faltar tres días consecutivos o cinco días, eso se entiende. Pero si está faltando tres o cinco días y no está llamando a la escuela para dejarlos saber, eso es cuando viene ya siendo un problema y es cuando tenemos que hacer las reuniones con los padres, no si usted las está reportando.
All right. If you have additional questions around what has been presented, you may ask.
Si tiene preguntas sobre lo que hablamos hoy sobre la presentación solamente, si por favor las puede hacer en este momento sobre la presentación.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to clarify the absentee stuff, just for me. So if my child is absent because she's sick, right? I call the school. She's sick. She's out today. I want to bring her to school and spread her germs everywhere. I called the school, she's sick, she's out today, you know, I want to bring her to school and spread her germs everywhere. Uh, and then, let's say, that happens in fall, and then in the spring, she's sick again, because that happens, right? It doesn't happen. And I, I call again, say, hey, she's sick, would she be reprimanded, would she?
No, she's safe.
Okay.
I'm so happy that I scared you all. I got my point across, and that's good. No, she is safe.
Okay.
Okay.
Dice la doctora Gabriela que se da cuenta que los asustó a todos, que otra mamá haciendo la misma pregunta, algo similar, si su hijo o su hija está enfermo durante una época y enfermo otra vez, si eso va a contar en contra al estudiante y la respuesta es no. Si está enfermo, esa es una excusa que entendemos.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my question is just about the list of school supplies.
I'm sorry.
Um, I do have one additional question, and I apologize. I don't know if it aligns with what the presentation said. But it's regarding mental health and what we're going to do with our student body regarding mental health, since we came out of the pandemic and we have depression and anxiety rising in children our ages. And I just want to know what's the plan that's in place to help those students?
Son, that's a very, very good question. Very good question, and I want you to know that we're baking that into our curriculum. We're baking it into the curriculum. But you're going to see something every week around, around.
Un muchacho aquí preguntó que cuál es el plan puesto para hablar acerca de la salud mental y para mejorar la salud mental de los estudiantes saliendo de una pandemia. Muchos tienen depresión, muchos tienen ansiedad, y cuál es el plan que vamos a hacer para ayudarlos? El doctor Henderson dijo que él le gustaría poner ayuda para la salud mental dentro de los planes que hay en la escuela. Así que esperamos ver pronto esto sometido a nuestro plan de educación.
I think that Dad will hear her question.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm just, uh...
Si me quiere preguntar en español, me puede decir.
The school supplies. When are we going to know, like, what, the school supplies, like, lately?
We're going to ask that you, that's a very, a specific question to your school. We're going to ask that you ask that question.
Al final se van a repartir, ¿a cuál escuela? PMSA, okay, al final va a haber una junta sobre PMSA y le va a poder poner un principal directamente.
I have a question.
Sure.
For the students that are wearing inappropriate clothing, are you going to send them home?
That's a question that you're going to ask your principal, but I would say absolutely.
Alguien preguntó que si viene un estudiante vestido inapropiadamente, que si se lo va a mandar para la casa, porque está vestido así. El doctor Henderson dice que por favor le pregunte a su escuela individualmente, pero que él cree que sí.
All right, let's move swiftly to finance and operations.
Actually, I have a question for you.
Sure.
I don't know if anybody addressed this, but I love the fact that you guys put that slide where you keep saying how it's a team effort, parents, students, teachers, school leadership. But honestly, I'm, I'm very sad that my daughter has to start the year unprepared, uh, because she didn't get, like, we said, a schedule, she didn't get her ID. But she also did not get her locker, I don't know how she's going to come the first day of school. Uh, she didn't get her computer. What is going on with that? I'm kind of scared that she's getting her, um, her schedule the day before, and also the teachers are getting their schedules just the day before.
Let me be very clear. Teachers know what they are be teaching. They just don't know the period that they'll be teaching.
Okay, how about the computer?
That really should have happened by now. Then if it, if it's okay, you will get one. We have ordered, the board has approved for, uh, for 500 computers. And we will have a computer for every scholar in the district.
I'm not concerned about whether she will have one or not. I know sooner or later she will have one, but my question is rather, why didn't, why wasn't all this prepared on the first day that she went orientation? We had all summer, maybe there's something I'm missing, maybe there was a shortage on laptops, I don't know, maybe...
Which school is that?
This is PMSA.
PMSA, okay.
West had the same issue.
West, okay. Ask those questions there, because I'm not sure as to why that didn't happen, all right?
So you're not aware of what's going on?
No, because that, it actually, some students actually did get computers.
They did get computers.
But I have a, going with her question, I came here Tuesday to pick up her books, but she's a freshman, her PMSA.
Okay.
I went to District 209 some years ago, but 20 years ago, and I can understand how registration works. You walked in, you got your schedule, you went, went and picked up your books, you got your ID, and you walked out, and you knew exactly what you're going to do for the first day of school. I'm worried for my daughter, that she's going to be, she's going to look with the head cut off, like she's walking around not knowing where she's going to go. When the email stated ID, laptop, that it was going to take some time to do it. We were here an hour and a half, and she ended up just walking out with books. Not knowing what time her class started, she just found out.
Okay.
You know, like, the emails are coming through with some communication, but then we're getting half of it. And I'm not one to complain or act, but you know what? This is my, this, again, communication is the big key that I'm here throughout this whole thing.
You're absolutely correct.
And I think this communication is getting cut a little bit. And for those pair, and I understand, some of us can be missing two, three days of school or work. We, yes, we have to be there for our child, but also it's hidden a lot of pockets with this.
Tenemos dos padres que están decepcionados con la manera que estamos ayudando con la administración. Ellos sienten que en sus hijos no han recibido libros, identificaciones computadoras, y quieren saber qué es lo que estamos haciendo, porque todo esto no se está resolviendo inmediatamente el primer día de escuela, la orientación. Está confundido el doctor, porque él dice que ciertos estudiantes sí lo han recibido y otros no. No estamos seguros porque algunos sí se lo han dado y porque a otros no. Entonces, estamos ahorita hablando sobre eso.
Let me be very clear, parents. This is not a hot seat for me. You have legitimate concerns. Now, did we drop the ball?
Yes.
You damn right we dropped the ball. You're absolutely correct. Hold me accountable for that. I take full responsibility. But tonight, we're not going to resolve all of your issues. But you are sharing them, and please do, continue to share them. You all have my direct cellphone number. It's right there online. It's right there online, and I've shared it with the community since I've been here. And I get back to you. Sometimes late, but I get back to you. So you have my contact number. It's right there online, but every family does. So give us the opportunity to rectify the issues that we are having. It's obvious we have some problems. But come Wednesday, every child will have his or her schedule. All right?
Dice el doctor Henderson que él toma toda la responsabilidad por lo que no se está haciendo, que él, que sí él toma la responsabilidad de que algunas cosas no se han hecho, que por favor lo disculpen, si están decepcionados con él, que él se va a asegurar de hacer todo lo posible para que cuando empiecen las escuelas, que todo marche bien.
And lastly, I'll be here all night if you need me to. So, but let's move quickly through the operations portion of this, and you can continue to ask questions.
Finalmente, dice el doctor que él va a estar aquí toda la noche, si tiene algunas preguntas, él va a estar aquí para respondérselas. Y ahora vamos a escuchar de nuestro director de finanzas y de las operaciones, el señor Cedric Lewis.
Good evening, Profeso. What I want to share with you is, first of all, the budget. The proposed budget will be happening in our hearing on it in September, Board of Education. Um, but what is a budget? The budget I branded it as the plan of instruction expressed in dollars and cents. Um, you're going to see a lot of investing that is going on. We're investing in security, we're investing in textbooks, we're investing in technology. Um, and we're investing heavily in our facilities, as you'll see in just a minute. Mr. LT Taylor is going to come behind me, but what I want you to see is up in the right corner, that's actual cash in the bank, 82 million. And I'm forecasting that we're going to end in an even better position. So Profeso is strong fiscally, uh, we're getting stronger operationally. Dr. Williams did not mention of the curriculum audit as forthcoming. We're investing in professional development for our staff, all staff, not just teachers. So just wanted you all to know we're in a very healthy position, and I'm going to ask Mr. Taylor to come and give you the rest of the presentation, thank you.
Ahora vamos a hablar, el Cedric Lewis habló acerca de cuáles son las finanzas de la escuela, en dónde estamos invirtiendo el dinero, parece que hay algo de dinero que metimos en comprar libros, en darle mejoramiento escolar a los maestros, también en construcción que le estamos haciendo a las escuelas. Ahorita mismo la escuela tiene 82 millones de dólares, y había, había ahí alguno de las cosas que planeamos hacer con el dinero y qué es lo que nos gustaría hacer con ello en la escuela. Ahora vamos a hablar con LT Taylor, y él es el director de operaciones aquí de la escuela.
Well, good evening, parents, students, staff, colleagues, board members. It is a pleasure to be here this afternoon, and we really appreciate all your hard questions. There were a few presentations to go over tonight. We're going to start with the security, with the security presentation. I'm sorry, we're going to have three presentations. One is going to be security, construction, maintenance, and operations maintenance, food service, and transportation.
Vamos a hacer un resumen de las operaciones, hablaremos de la seguridad de construcción, el proceso y mantenimientos, también acerca del servicio de comida y hablaremos del transporte.
So we're going to start with food service. Uh, we want everyone to know that Profeso was proud to move into the second year of having an in-house food service, uh, directly impacting our scholars in a positive way, greeting them and making sure they have a hot breakfast and a hot lunch.
Estamos hablando ahora acerca de la implementación del servicio de comida, y estamos orgullosos de decir que Profeso se esfuerza lo más que puede para implementar desayuno gratis para todos los estudiantes y asegurarnos que ellos coman un desayuno y un noche nutritivo todos los días.
All Profeso students at the three schools will eat free breakfast and lunch, and adults will be charged $5.50 per lunch.
Todos los estudiantes comerán gratis en la escuela, noche y desayuno, y los adultos son cobrados $5.50 por noche.
In the next few weeks, Profeso Township High School intends to conduct a survey of the student meals to enhance student participation, starting as early as next week.
Esta escuela va a tener cuestionarios sobre las comidas que le gustarán a los estudiantes y deseamos que se cumplan los requisitos de calidad.
One of the food service goals there at Profeso Township High School is to increase student meal participation in breakfast, considering students, um, considering students asked in May of last year, May of this year, that we provide additional hot breakfasts on the lines at all three schools.
Nuestra meta es incrementar la participación en el desayuno, ya que deseamos que los estudiantes se beneficien de ellos. Y una de las cosas que los estudiantes pidieron los años pasados fue que se diera más opciones de desayunos calientes y ahora los vamos a proporcionar.
We're going to move on to transportation. Uh, there was a few questions related to our transportation services. Um, the district is actively engaging in conversation with our, with our Gilvane Construction Partner and our Perkins and Wheel Architectural Department to build a bus barn over at Profeso West High School to enhance and make sure that our kids get to school on time and get back home on time.
Esas son las implementaciones de transporte. Estamos orgullosos de estar construyendo un establo para mantener a los autobuses y continuar nuestro servicio de transporte diligentemente.
With the transportation piece to and from school, we plan to register parents on the First View app, so you can, in real time, you can see where your kid's buses at, and you don't have to guess when the bus should be showing up. In the event, we have inclement weather, or maybe an accident, or anything like that.
Deseamos registrar a nuestros padres estudiantes en una aplicación que se llama First View App. Lo que hace esta aplicación es que usted puede ver dónde está su estudiante en el autobús, para si, si hay alguna emergencia o una mala incrementación de temperatura, usted podrá siempre estar hablando de su estudiante.
In past years, District 209 has partnered with First Student to make sure that our scholars get to school on time and back home on time, and we plan to continue that partnership.
En los años pasados hemos trabajado con esta compañía que se llama First Student para uso de transporte. Este año deseamos continuar nuestro servicio con esta compañía para seguir usando sus servicios para llevar y traer a nuestros estudiantes.
Uh, moving on to activity buses, this will directly impact your kids in the late evenings when they are participating in a club, participating in a sport. We will have one activity bus, bus for PMSA, two for East, and two for Profeso West.
Si es que su hijo está participando en actividades extracurriculares, estos son los autobuses que vamos a tener disponibles. Uno para PMSA, dos autobuses para East, y dos autobuses para West.
Moving on to security, we want to make sure that everyone have the understanding that Profeso is diligently trying to hire as many security professionals as possible. We are not lagging in that space. We do need to provide some training to our staff, and we plan on doing that over Institute Day on the 28th and the 29th of this month.
La seguridad de nuestra escuela, primeramente deseamos saber que estamos tratando de reclutar los oficiales necesitados para que, para mantener a nuestra escuela segura. Tenemos a personnel disponible, pero siempre deseamos seguir entrenándolos para que sigan mejorando como seguridad.
A few planned, uh, training pieces is active shooter drills for our entire staff, uh, District 209, on Institute Day, and to, and to provide crisis prevention intervention for our entire security staff to directly address some of these fights that we've been having in the district.
Algunas de las actividades que tenemos o entrenamientos que tenemos planeados para el distrito es cómo actuar en el caso de que alguien, un disparador activo se meta a la escuela, cómo es que todos como maestros y estudiantes podemos trabajar.
That training will cost the district over $25,000 for those two days. So we just want everybody to know that we're, we do understand your concern, and we're no doubt taking it very seriously.
Este entrenamiento nos va a costar los dos días $15,000 dólares, pero les estamos dejando saber para que ustedes sepan lo importante que es para nosotros que la escuela tenga este entrenamiento.
Moving on to operations and maintenance and the construction updates. Over at Profeso East, the construction is going well. We do intend to have the building open for teachers this week, and no doubt, we're going to have the building open on September 1st for your scholars to be in the buildings, safe and clean, and we have the regional office education to give our occupancy permits.
Esas son algunos de las actualizaciones de construcción que están haciendo en East. Si puede aquí ver las fotos, lo que sí está implementando, lo que está nuevo, y lo que deseamos es estar listos y tener la escuela lista para septiembre 1st cuando entren sus estudiantes.
So moving on to Profeso West, the same thing over at Profeso West. We're enhancing the cafeteria over there at Profeso West. It's extremely warm in that area, and that's one of our largest communal spaces. We want to make sure we have these large spaces. So when we have activities at Profeso East, we have a nice conditioned space. The district is giving us a lot of dollars and investing for your scholars to be comfortable in that space.
Esas son las actualizaciones y construcciones de West. El muro de la cortina ha sido removida, están haciendo nuevas instalaciones y construcciones en la cafetería. El distrito le ha dado mucho dinero a West para que ellos puedan hacer las construcciones necesarias para que sus estudiantes estén cómodos.
Uh, this picture here is the classroom on or around the 25th, um, with the unit ventilation system. This system has a filtration system in it. Every classroom on the top floor and the middle floor would have helpful filtration to directly combat COVID-19 and any other germs.
Si puede ver aquí, esas son las fotos de West, alguna de las construcciones. Están instalando unidades de ventiladores para que haya aire acondicionado y también un filtro para combatir cualquier instante de COVID-19 que pueda filtrarse al sistema.
Is there any questions around security?
¿Alguna pregunta sobre algunas de las presentaciones que vimos?
Just one quick question. I remember hearing you say that the regional office of education came around to do occupancy checks. Will we have access to the information of maximum occupancy per classroom to make sure that our classrooms are not overcrowded? Because last year, I mean, there were pictures going around social media of how overcrowded classrooms were.
Yeah, we actually have that information from our architectural team already. I will speak to the superintendent and we decide, he will decide how to share it.
Alguien está preguntando sobre cuántos estudiantes pueden estar dentro de una clase a la vez cuando está ocupancia máxima. Y está diciendo el director que él va a ver cuánto es, dependiendo de la escuela cuánto es, y va a ver la manera que pueda compartir esa información con ustedes.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, so is First Student doing the bus service this year or no?
It is the hope to have them do the bus service.
What, what does that mean? Because that's in a week.
So we're actively engaging in conversations with them right now. I don't see a reason why First Student will not be our provider. But we don't want to cross the bridge before we have proper votes on it. So I don't want to say yes because they could get voted down at the board meeting.
So what is the board meeting? Because I haven't heard about a board meeting between now and next Thursday, so that would be missed to me.
I had the opportunity to speak with the board president today. And so looking at a possible board meeting Tuesday next week.
Alguien está preguntando si First Student va a seguir siendo nuestra compañía para los autobuses y si vamos a seguir trabajando con ello. Hasta ahora no sabemos, dice el doctor que no sabe por qué no, que dice el amigo seguir trabajando con nosotros, es lo que esperamos. Y en la junta de educación es cuando vamos a tener más información respecto a ello.
All right, next up is Human Resources, our director, Dr. Scott Haddada.
Ahora vamos a escuchar de nuestro director de recursos humanos, el señor Scott Haddada.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to tell you that it is the mission of Human Resources to hire, to recruit, and to support our employees so they can support your students. Now, I know that you know Proviso is facing the same challenges as other schools in the state and in this nation. I also know that what matters most to you is not what's happening at other schools in the state or in the nation, but it's what is happening here in Proviso. So I will tell you that a certified staff member will be teaching your student this year.
Dice el director, sorry, dice el director que él sabe que es muy importante para usted que tengamos maestros certificados de alta educación enseñando a nuestros estudiantes. Él dice que él está haciendo todo lo posible para asegurarse y contratar el personal docente necesario.
The reality of our situation is that PMSA is fully staffed for core content areas, and we're talking about math, science, English, and social studies. Proviso West has four math vacancies currently and two science vacancies. Proviso East has four math vacancies and two English vacancies. That is the reality. Human Resources is turning every stone to find a qualified candidate, as we have been doing the entire summer. The reality also is that we are going to face this challenge head-on. We will get creative, there will be six assignments. So our certified staff members in our schools will be covering these classes. There will also be, if necessary, because we have to be realistic here. We learned a lot during COVID, during the pandemic, so we will be using our own resources. We will be using technology to ensure that a certified staff member is teaching your students. All the while, HR will continue to turn every stone to fill these vacancies.
En este momento Proviso Math and Science Academy, su personal está lleno. No hay vacancias en Proviso Math and Science Academy. En West, hay cuatro lugares vacantes para maestros de matemática, dos de ciencia. En East, hay cuatro vacantes de matemática y dos de inglés. Dice el director que una vez más están haciendo todo lo posible para encontrar el mejor personal disponible para sus escuelas. Están buscando maneras creativas de contratar a buenos maestros y que tengamos buenos delegados aquí en la escuela para representar a ustedes y a sus hijos.
Are there any questions?
¿Alguna pregunta?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we have a few vacancies in core areas of math, science, English, but we teach a lot more than that in this district, so how many total vacancies of teachers are at each school?
Sure.
Dice la mamá que hay más que simplemente matemática, ciencia y inglés en esta escuela, que obviamente decíamos mucho más que eso. Entonces, ¿cuántos en total de vacancias hay en esta escuela?
So PMSA is fully staffed. The count at West is nine, and the count at East is eleven. But that is, so, you know, we're looking at East. There's one special ed, there's one PE, there's one world language. Now, we can absorb those with six assignments. So again, we're focusing, so that's the reality. Those are the numbers, and we are, we are trying to fill every single position, and we are focusing on those core subjects.
En este momento tenemos nueve vacancias en West y once vacancias en East. Una vez más, está esforzando lo más posible para llenarlas con maestros certificados.
For my sake, what does six assignment mean? Does that mean they have more work?
Yeah, so a six assignment essentially means that the district will pay. The, the district will, will compensate and pay a teacher to pick up an additional class to teach.
La pregunta es, ¿qué significa que tiene seis asignaciones? Y eso significa que el distrito va a pagar adicionalmente este maestro por tomar más cursos de lo necesario.
Yes.
My other question, it kind of falls to LT's presentation, but it works for you too. How many security do we have at each school? And how many do we need for each school? To be where we should be to avoid all the fights that have been happening.
¿Cuánta seguridad tenemos en las escuelas y cuánta seguridad necesitamos en la escuela para evitar las peleas?
Our number is fifty-three. We will have fifty-three fully staffed security, and beyond that I would defer to LT.
Cincuenta y tres. Tenemos cincuenta y tres personas de seguridad en este momento.
We can't talk about that from LA, right?
We have four vacancies right now.
Tenemos cuatro espacios disponibles para más seguridad.
Yes.
So just so we're clear, when, when the district talks about a six assignment, that is a teacher taking on an extra and unnecessary duty. While that teacher might get paid, it's just another reflection that the district is actually short-stacked. Just to be clear.
Dice que solamente para estar claro, una maestra que toma seis asignaciones, está tomando más asignaciones de lo que necesita necesariamente y por ello le estamos pagando más. Entonces la pregunta es, entonces si nos falta más personal docente, ¿verdad?
Let me be very clear and address that question, Ms. Soto. Six assignment is nothing new. This is what we've always done. So we'll be doing it this year if need be. Just that simple, ladies and gentlemen.
Una maestra de seis asignaciones no es nada nuevo, lo hemos hecho en los años pasados, así que simplemente contrataremos más maestros así.
Okay, since you guys don't have any math teachers at Proviso, what is your plan? You guys have stopped all these kids at one time. Are you guys going to have to clean down the floor again like last year?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean.
Okay, I said that since you guys have no math teachers at Proviso, what is your plan?
We didn't have no.
Stop these kids with all these kids and have them put them down the door again like last year?
So again, we will be looking at six assignments, and we will do what we're calling integrated instruction, or shall I say district learning, whereby you have a teacher who is already teaching math through technology. We will, that, another class will be able to get that same instruction from a certified teacher in the same district.
Okay, now you guys are not prepared for a school for this kind of stuff. How do you expect these kids to be prepared to be at school?
Again, we are very much prepared, ma'am.
Not by we jerk, I guess.
Hey, we have vacancies, we have vacancies, and we're going to deal with it.
By when? By next year? Because this year, my daughter is going to have, I don't remember what class, I don't know what teacher for, like two, two weeks maybe. I think it was, one, it was the assignment class. Now, she was supposed to be at this school last year. They took her off her honors math class to put her in a regular class because they didn't have any space for her here. And now you guys don't have any teachers to specialize in.
We will, we will have a certified staff for every child.
Okay, now are you going to talk about community service or are you going to not?
Community service?
Yes.
What do you do?
They have to take community service to graduate. How is that going to work for kids like, in PMSA, like my daughter, she stayed up.
What grade is your baby? What grade is she?
But she was in freshman, staying up till one in the morning, doing homework. So how do you guys expect these kids to keep up with homework, going through community service though?
I believe the board approved from forty hours to twenty community service hours. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in, in, instead of forty hours, it's twenty.
Is that the whole year?
For the whole year. I mean, I mean, yes, yes, for all four years.
Because playing with her help was not okay. It's the same with her help was not realizing. She stayed up till one in the morning, doing homework, because I don't remember what teacher would give her homework, excuse my language, off the air, which was something she would eat, and so she would take a snack, and she would eat it until late. Which is not okay. That's why I want to know how is community service going to work?
Quiero pedirle una disculpa a la comunidad hispana, estoy tratando de hacer lo mejor que puedo, daros el todo, pero a veces se habla demasiado y no puedo. Lo primero que preguntó ella fue sobre la matemática en East. Ella siente que no hay suficientes maestros y que es el plan para los maestros y es que no hay suficiente. Lo segundo que preguntó fue sobre las horas de servicio de comunidad. ¿Cómo esperan que los hijos cumplan con sus horas de servicio de comunidad y también terminen con su tarea? Y esas, esas, las preguntas que hicieron, creo que el doctor dijo que cuando compartamos y repartamos las clases, cada quien le puede preguntar y que finalmente es su principal, una vez más disculpa.
All right, families, it's that time. But before we do that, before we move to our schools, let me make sure that you have my personal, my work cell number.
El celular del doctor Henderson, si le gusta, anotas.
Now you may call me between the hours of six and eight AM, six and eight PM.
De seis a ocho AM y de seis a ocho PM lo pueden llamar.
That number is seven zero eight,
Siete cero ocho.
Six seven six,
Seis siete seis.
Six one five nine.
Seis uno cinco nueve.
Call that number, I will get back with you within twenty-four hours.
Lámelo, déle un mensaje y él responderá su llamada en veinticuatro horas.
All right, so you have direct access to me.
Así tiene acceso directo a él.
All right, Mr. Hall, please stand.
Mister Hall de East se va a parar en este momento para que lo reconozcan.
All of the scholars who will be attending East, will you please follow Mr. Hall at this time?
Todos los estudiantes que van a ir a East, por favor, pueden seguir a Mister Hall. Él los va a llevar a la cafetería donde podrán hacer las preguntas que usted necesita. En este momento, Proviso East.
Mister Hall will be taking you to the cafeteria. Doctor Brass, please stand.
Ahora vamos a llamar al doctor Brass.
All students who will be attending West, please follow Doctor Brass to the third floor.
Todos los estudiantes que van a ir a West, por favor, de seguir al doctor Brass.
And the library.
Van a ir al tercer piso a la librería, por favor. El doctor Brass está ahí atrás y está de robo.
Mister No, will you please stand? You can come forward, Mister No.
Y aquí adelante vamos a tener a Mister No, él es el principal de Proviso Math and Science Academy.
Parents and scholars, if you are attending or your child is attending PMSA, you will remain in this area.
Si su hijo, su estudiante está yendo a Proviso Math and Science Academy, se puede quedar aquí mismo en el auditorio y vamos a escuchar a nuestro principal, Mister No.
Again, parents, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. Thank you for your questions, thank you for your concern. You have my direct number, and you can call me directly yourself to have your concerns addressed.
Una vez más, una vez más, padres y familiares, le damos muchas gracias por estar presentes, gracias por sus preguntas, y usted tiene su número de teléfono, si tiene alguna pregunta, por favor, por favor de llamarla, llamarlo y hásrsela.
Thank you all very much, and you are now in the hands of your president.
Muchas gracias una vez más, y ahora vamos a escuchar a nuestro principal, Mister No.